Top of the hour.
We got four people here. Let's find out if Phil's coming.
All right, well, it has hit the top of the hour, so I'd ask that we begin by going through our pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody here within our chambers, as well as those that are tuning in to our broadcast. We are here because of the publicly noticed public hearing. That public hearing purpose is to hear and gather comments, concerns, and suggestions from our residents, stakeholders, and the general public regarding the current proposed or potential changes to vehicle weight limits and restrictions on the Horse Island Bridge and Young Street Bridge. And with that being said, I'd love to turn over the floor to Clerk Tomasic to please call roll.
Schumay.
Here.
Cox.
Here.
McNabb.
Here.
Mulnar. Valentine. Walden.
Here.
Wood.
Here.
We have absent members. Katie, would you like a motion to excuse those absent members?
I don't think that's necessary for the public hearing.
No motions necessary for excusing absent members. So again, I revert us back to the objective. We're very excited. I think giving the public a voice on all matters that are impacting our public is imperative. I want to lean into this with a special shout out to Treasurer Fonti and to Councilwoman Wood. I know it takes an army, but when it comes to the Horse Island Bridge Steering Committee members, these are the leaders of the Army. As a resident here and a resident of Horse Island, as an example, I really appreciate all the efforts you put into that project. I know it's been a lot across the journey. What I want to focus the public on is this is about you and giving you information through the experts and then hearing from you. So this meeting is a public hearing that's not designed for back and forth with council or members of the departments, but rather getting your voice on the matters that are presented. So with that logic, what we'd like to be doing is having Treasurer Fonti and our partner from the engineering firm are going to walk us through information around the topics that were publicly noticed. We're going to start with that component, and then we're going to pass it over to the public and make sure that we can hear your concerns, questions, and comments. It'll help us collect all this information through the public hearing so that we can take it to subsequent council meetings and obviously drive decisions accordingly. So with that, counsel, any other comments you'd like to add? Treasurer Fonti, may I ask, for you?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and community of listening in and those present today. Our engineer from Collins is caught in traffic at Detroit Metropolitan Airport area because of the storm, so he's going to be about 30 minutes late. So I wasn't really prepared to lead the discussion, but I'll ad lib from his agenda that he had prepared tonight, and when he gets here, he can probably focus on it a little bit better. So I'm going to be speaking primarily as a member of the Infrastructure Advisory Committee that we've challenged Collins Engineering with a lot of information for the Horse Island Bridge and then recently with the Young Street Bridge. So I would like for tonight's discussion to be split into two parts. One, the Young Street Bridge, and one, the Horse Island Bridge. And I think I've mentioned to several people, I don't think we need to get into the minutia of the Horse Island Bridge tonight with the design and other components, the budget and that, because it's still a work in process. Probably concluding in our next infrastructure meeting to where we can present to council, and then at that point, council could take charge of the direction it wants to go. There'll be a budget proposed from the engineer. You can take that, or you can put that out for an RFP. But they'll have suggestions and options for the reconstruction of the bridge or the rebuilding of the bridge. But just to make note, that bridge is listed for historical eligibility on the federal register. It's a 100-year-old bridge, so it's got to, it has to go through a lot of tests through the historical departments and Lansing and so on and so forth. Phil's getting figures on that and where we have to go with that. But as we charged him with the Infrastructure Committee was to find the true load capacity of that bridge, because there's been in our past files and that indication that the bridge met legal load standards and the posting didn't read accordingly. The posting was used to just keep heavy trucks and long trucks out of the one-way roadway of Horse Island. Since that time, he's come back with a load capacity that actually rates the bridge at its current level of eight, 16, and 24. We'll get into that separately, but that's kind of the prelude to this whole thing. So let's start with the Young Street Bridge. And what I want to do is conclude with this information is that since we have a building department now, and since we've been getting a lot of known incursions on both bridges of overweight, we've had several of them on Horse Island we've never had before, were 53, 60-foot trailers, semi-trailers, highway trailers with freight have come down the island and had to be backed off or meticulously turned around in mid- roadway and on people's lots to get them off. And we can't attribute that to other than just poor judgment by the drivers, but it happens. And these weights are over and above what the bridges can take. People are concerned about it. So on the flip side of that, our Director of Public Safety, Director Bullard, is scheduling a class for an officer to go for commercial weight restriction classes and enforcement, because right now, we don't have the enforcement we need. Even though most of the times, the incursions occur after the fact or we're aware of it after the fact, we need to be proactive on this, because these bridges are, you know, they're in a tender state, and the more that we cross them with overweight vehicles and that, the more life we take out of these bridges. So let's start with the Young Street Bridge, and I'll pair, I'll actually read from his agenda. Currently, both bridges, Horse Island Bridge, which is bridge number 12495 on the MDOT listing, and the Young Street Bridge, or the Young Drive Bridge, bridge number 12496, are posted and restricted truckloads due to inherent structural capacity limitations inherent in their designs and subsequent construction. Additionally, both bridges provide access to small islets, which have limited turnaround capabilities for vehicles. Neither has a large cul-de-sac at the end with a turning radius of over 35 feet, which is most large trucks and tractor trailer rigs. I corrected him on that, because Young Street has a circular roadway that doesn't restrict, and it makes it even more attractive to drivers that don't know what they're doing or how to read a load posting sign. The Young Street Bridge is a two-span box-beam superstructure bridge constructed in 1990, supported by driven H-pile-supported concrete abutments and a pier with a six-inch non-composite concrete deck. Non-composite means the six inches of concrete on top of the box beams does not add any strength to the bridge, but acts as a wearing surface and is a strictly, becomes a deadload support by the bridge. Basically, since it's not suspended, that six inches of concrete incorporates into the load of that bridge, taking away the active use of the bridge for the load on the truck. For the Young Street Bridge, the box beams are limited, are limiting factors for this bridge's truckload capacity. Per their investigation, the seven prestressing strands placed in the bottom of each box beam should have been increased to 10 or as many as 14 to support the legal load requirements. The Young Drive Bridge also has some concerns for the deadman anchors attached to the abutments and their condition. The bridge is currently posted for eight-ton, 12-ton, and 16-ton capacities, given the certain axle configurations of the truck. But per our calculations, we could recommend posting it for a 16-ton, 21-ton, and a 32-ton based on the truck loading alone. However, the ability of large trucks to turn around is still an issue. Again, that, I think that's part of Phil's error here, that they are able to turn around on Young Street or to make the complete circle. So his suggestion would be to increase from an eight-ton load to a 16-ton to a, from a 12-ton to a 21-ton and a 16-ton to a 32-ton. However, to the layperson, what does this all mean? So he'll get into this a little bit later. Let me pass up the Horse Island Bridge right now, as we're still on the Young Street. The pier construction is a driven H-pile, a construction on Young Street with concrete encasements and a concrete cap supporting the box beam. The superstructure is composed of B-17 by 36-inch prestressed box beams with a non-composite six-inch concrete topping. The plans do not present any of the details that would indicate the concrete topping was designed to act compositively with the box beams to increase their strength. That is, there's no projecting stirrups extending from the box beams into the concrete topping to engage the concrete. Thus, this concrete topping is not structural and acts as a deadload on the box beam. Plan details indicate a total of seven prestressing strands in each box beam, far less than what should have been designed. Calculations by Collins Engineering yielded higher truckloads than current posted permits. However, our calculations do not yield results to permit full legal loads due to limits of the superstructure's design details. Calculations result in capacity of 16, 21, and 32-ton, according to their recent calculations, approximately twice currently posted. Loading is presented as the unit one, unit two, and unit three of trucks, and he gives a detail. Unit one truck is a two-axle, is a 20-ton gross vehicle weight truck, approximately 26 feet long. Unit two truck is a three-axle, is a 36-ton gross vehicle weight truck, approximately 49 feet long. And unit three truck is five-axle, is a 40-ton gross vehicle weight, approximately 55 feet long. And based on the deadloads of this, the span length and the number of prestressing strands, the strength of this bridge is approximately 60% of what a legal-loaded truck should be based on in the calculations we perform. So the bridge was under design, and therefore, as a result of that, you're probably looking at 60% of what that bridge can carry per an MDOT legal load design bridge. And a quick check of the existing bridge's design of the box beams, the number of prestressing strand in each of the box beams should have been in between 10 and 14 strands. The abutments typically would have had the front piling battered towards the waterway to resist the forces acting on the back of the abutments. As shown in the plans, these battered piles do not resist any rotational forces causing the abutments to move forward towards the waterway. It appears the designer used tension rods and deadman weights to resist the lateral forces acting on those abutments. The condition of the deadman anchors and the tension rod is unknown at the time. In summation, the bridge should remain posted to the limit loads using the structure through the limits for their, for the trucks that could be based, or could be increased based on previously mentioned engineering calculation. Truck size should be limited to address concerns for a vehicle making the turn, so a different sign limiting vehicle length should also be considered, with the caveat that the load is the bridge's limiting factor. A gravel train is short but too heavy. That's one of his examples. So there was a lot said there. We've got a substandard design on the bridge, basically. And it was realized this, I think, probably within 10 years of a bridge inspection. It was downrated to eight, 12, and 16. And these are the things that need to be explained a little further in detail. And what I've asked Phil to do is put, put what he's going to increase the bridge to, which is the 16, 21, and 32. It's going to give the neighborhood a little more increase. They're going to be able to bring some additional concrete over, but a standard concrete truck, just curb weight alone, is not going to make it. It's going to still have to be a short-load truck or a lighter-weight truck. And in the concrete, probably could be increased from like a yard and a half to maybe three yards. He'll go all through that, and I think those are the paperwork that needs to be attached to the building permits that when people have building construction and they don't know really how to interpret some of these postings, that this letter or this posting that Building Department will give out, Building Department will give out, will better educate them and their contractor. So probably, when Phil gets here and we confirm what I just read, that probably there's, I'm going to assume that council will probably need to make a recommendation to upgrade the signage based on his report, on his low-capacity report. So any questions on that?
Can I just, so to kind of simplify the overall summary, and I know Phil will have more color for us. One is taking the load capacity rating that's posted up from eight, 12, 16 to 16, 21, 32. That's kind of one theme of the...
That is, that is probably the overall theme of it. There is no corrections that are going to be able to be made to reinforce the bridge and bring the load up.
And so then my naive headspace, because I'm not an expert in bridges, would try and to understand that load increase posting in context of what I'm also hearing, which is structural design deficiency. Meaning, the number of strands is too low, there's dead weight that's not benefiting structural, but frankly, pulling dead weight on the bridge. So understanding how those two relate, you know, we're increasing load, yet there's structural design deficiency is something I'd like to better understand from Phil.
So also keep in mind, that would be a bridge that I would suggest that you would want to go out for a grant solicitation, even though I know there's concentration on the Frankenpoet one down here at Jefferson. This one here is a known, you know, I don't, I, let's not use the term deficiency as far as unsafe. It only becomes unsafe if we overload it. And so it's not in that condition to where we need to worry about factors like that. But we did pay for a legal-loaded bridge. We assumed we had a legal-loaded bridge. And then through subsequent inspections and that, it was determined that, for various other reasons, it had problems. And then when the city hired Collins to do a load capacity test back in, I think, 2010, they came up with these findings and confirmed what the other engineers had suspected. And so now, moving forward to 2025, it is basically what it is. But through the, through the committee and that, we've also found, and Phil supported, that we could increase that up to a higher mid-standard.
Got it. Great. Thank you for the overview.
Anything, Mr. Cox, you can add to it?
Just that I do feel that some research needs to be done on how that bridge got placed, and 10 years later, we find the deficiencies where they're at from a cost relation.
Well, as you know, as we go through with the committee and what Phil has brought forward on new designs and what the requirements are from MDOT, MDOT's saying 75 years on a lifespan of a new bridge. So this bridge was, unfortunately, the questions I asked, how does a substandard design get through engineering?
Great.
Both at, you know, at our, at our engineers' level and at MDOT, who certified the plans to proceed. But in the legal experts that I talked to, it's pretty much, you're beating on a dead horse trying to get restitution on it. So I don't know what else to say.
It's helpful, and I think based on the discussion we had with the engineers, separate matter today, there was discussions around the history of inspections and the requirements for certifications and how that's probably evolved over time, so perhaps that might be...
Yeah, it's been a, it's, the whole certification and the inspections and the load capacity, you know, we're seeing that because we have eight bridges here, but you're seeing the work in process of when the federal government started mandating certain requirements, as they subjected the states to do that, and then how fast the states regulated that and put things into motion. And here we are today, and we're picking up the pieces that, you know, were faulty in the past because of the way those regulations and the inspections took place, so. But there should be some comfort. Phil, like I said, when he gets here, he could expand on the comfort of raising the limits up and probably further discuss the truck configuration. But one of the problems we've had, like Friday, somebody calls in and it's a contractor, and they want relief on the Young Street Bridge to bring heavy loads over.
Yep.
You know, and our girls in the office are faced with this dilemma. And so I want to get that clarity, so nobody has to make that decision. There's no decision to be made. It's this, this, and this. And then as the chief gets his department in the shape for enforcing these things, then we can regulate that better. So, any questions?
Now, just last thing on that matter, since you had brought it up with the violators of load postings. I know, Chief, we've had discussions on it. Not only has there been enforcement on ticketing of those individuals, but he's looking at partnership with Trenton and other neighbors around better monitoring and weight car rails.
Well, I think, yeah, I think, you know, just looking at it from 30,000 feet, most of our problems are with the residents, you know, either not knowing or knowingly trying to push something that shouldn't be over there. And I know it's really hard for people to see, you know, a structure sitting there, and you're only limited to such and such, and it's going to cost you more money. But that's the purpose of this meeting, is to bring awareness to this, because the city is going to start enforcing it. And when you do cut a corner like that, you're subjecting you, your family, and others to what potentially might happen to that bridge. So...
Well, thank you for the overview, and maybe Horse Island Bridge is the next on the docket, unless you have any other thoughts on Young? Great.
So Horse Island Bridge, it's a 1925-built bridge. It's 100 years old. It serviced us for these 100 years. Again, that also suffered from the early onset of inspections and how to inspect and the unknowns of inspection and civil engineers doing inspection when they should have been bridge engineers. But at the time, it wasn't mandated by the feds to do that. And that articulates into where we're at now. The biggest problem we're facing with the Horse Island Bridge is its history, its design. It's an encapsulated concrete arch bridge that will take more weight than most bridges around here. But calculating that weight is a very subjective ideal. And through our research, there's been all kinds of documents, white papers written on the arch bridge and encapsulated concrete bridge without plans on how you get to that formalization. Now, in all due respect to Phil, and if he was sitting here, I'd tell him the same thing. I've been challenging him very hard on his conclusions, because, again, they're subjective. We don't have any plans. We don't know who built it. We know it's got every trade of a Luton-designed bridge, which backs us into federal patents that the engineer had at the time. Phil's done research at the University of Purdue, the Archives of Michigan and Lansing, and we've tried to drill down on every aspect of Daniel B. Luton's file. He was a prolific bridge engineer, built over 20,000 bridges between Canada, Mexico, and the United States. This arch bridge is very typical of his design. The parapet walls carry his design inlay on it. There's other features on it. So the committee, before we rendered this bridge subjected to the wrecking ball, we charged Collins Engineering with finding out as much information as they can. And that was purposed by doing core drilling on the bridge to find out what the concrete thickness was and to do destructive testing on the concrete to find out what the strength was. Inadvertently, they hit a section of re-still, which they were able to extract the size from that. And again, that's probably where Phil and I have our disagreement on making a total decision based on one sliver of a re-still section in that bridge. But he was able to certify that the concrete structure is, or the concrete itself is very good, almost compressive strength for when it was built. And that's because the High Camber Bridge on that sheds water and sheds chloride, so there's not much penetration. It's got a heavy slope on it, so water gets off it quick. And that's why we've had success with it all these years with very low maintenance. However, the substructure is subject to washouts and undermining, and that's been fortified. Collins did a design on that with grout bags and that, but that's a constant shift also in maintenance. So Phil's come up basically with his conclusion that, based on his recommendation, is that the bridge stay at an eight, 12, and 16-ton capacity rating. The biggest problem we're having now with, even if the citizens observe that and the contractors observe that, is that we still are going to have to post for a tight cul-de-sac or a non-returnable situation there. The other thing is that, as the application was applied for, this bridge actually should have been applied for under the historical... have been applied for under the historical act and, and other grant features that Michigan and the feds have offered for, for bridges of this type of history to them. But in fact, we, what we did is we, we applied through the MDOT program with federal granted money, but it requires that bridges in this program meet legal axle load standards. So as, as the challenges continue, as Phil downgraded this bridge to an actual eight, twelve, and 16, that kind of takes it off the parameters of rehabilitating it unless you can get to rehabilitation up to legal load standards. But then the, that regulates us because it, or diminishes that because it doesn't give us the shelf life that MDOT requires out of a rehabilitated bridge. So we're basically in a catch-22 with that. So the options that are going to be right now, unless we can find other matters or other formulas or other design criteria that suggests that Collins is wrong in their calculations of, of keeping it at eight, twelve, and 16. And if the city wants to continue with the $3 million grant, then it's gonna, the, the bridge will basically have to be removed and replaced. If I'm saying that right, Phil can, can reconfirm that. So those are the challenges that council will have here in the very near future. The other thing is we have a proposed budget from him, from him to take it through all the necessary courses of, of, of the environmental issues to design and so on and so forth. And, you know, that, that's going to be around a $900,000 bill. Now, I'm not in support of that right now until I get into the details, but we can always throw that out into an RFP for a design-built project and, and get what I would suspect a, a lower cost on that. But that's where we're at. Unless the calculations, we can, if, if, if we can convince an engineering firm that their calculations are weak or subject to, you know, call it, non-standards of other engineers doing a, a, a bridge of this antiquity, then I think we're going to be stuck with what the report shows of, of a low-capacity bridge. Now, for most of us, seeing that bridge and seeing what has gone over that bridge and the sustainability of 100 years, it's kind of hard for a lot of us to believe that this bridge is subjected to an eight, twelve, and 16-ton standard. But calculating it through the engineer right now, that's where we're at. And so again, that would require Phil to put together a nice little chart that could be contained at the building department, given out with permits. We can give that to the, the ladies in the office and they could, you know, give this to anybody that's coming in there inquiring what the load is. And then again, the director will have enforcement at the time in the near future and we could enforce it when we get any incursions that shouldn't be there.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know really more to add. Let me just look at his notes here, see if I've, I don't want to get into the minutia of the truck axles and all this other stuff, but it's, Councilman Cox, did I miss anything that we've talked to in the meetings?
No, I think you've covered everything. I think we need Phil here to handle his part of the presentation, but are there concerns with the level of information to attain where these tonnage rates are, have been evaluated? Yeah, when it's one core, right?
Yeah.
I have, I have concern that I'd like to have more information to see if that's accurate or if other cores provide different information. There's, as you know as well as I do, a core three feet from each other can have a variation in it.
The other thing too, and you brought this up, is that I failed to mention that in 1996 or 97, Spalding did a calculation from using engineering books that were prevalent at the time of Luton designing this bridge. And then in 2010, Collins did the same load capacity test, verified Spalding's report, put it on computer-aided design software at the time, because in 2010, bridge engineers have, you know, moved from, you know, hand calculations to a computer-aided designs calculation and came in and supported Spalding's report and then also supported the fact that the bridge didn't need any posting signs, just needed a, a dead end or a, you know, non-turnable roadway. And so now we have the same engineers contradicting their own 2010 plan. And that's where I kind of have a little bit of, I got a lot of, of problems with it along with Councilman Cox's suggestion on, on the one, one core and the one sliver and so on and so forth. So, that's why it's still a moving target and that, if, if that problem becomes resolved, then, then we'll either have an option to rebuild it or we won't have an option with the grant money.
Yep.
And, and the idea with the grant money is you could either take it or leave it. So that'll be council's decision to do that also, so.
Have we got finality on the grant that it can only be used for reconstruct or can it be used for rehabilitation?
It, the council resolution was for rehabilitation, but MDOT is saying that's a formality, you know? It, it just lends to the argument that the city was willing to pay their fair share of, of the grant. And if push comes to shove, council could always go back and, and change that resolution. But the, the, the rehabilitation method would have to, right now, and these are things that council will need to make recommendations to fill on, is that it still requires a two-lane bridge.
And a legal load capacity.
And a, a legal loading bridge. You could still get the arch out of it and get boat traffic. You know, Phil had some suggestions on his design for putting a supportive arch underneath or over the top. That I think gives us 35 years of shelf life. But again, I don't believe that supports some of the substructure work that needs to go on and so on and so forth. Well, like I said, the committee's going to have to get into this rather rapidly because we have to start moving on, on the grant here. MDOT's been notified that we're in this process. Phil's notified them, I've notified them. There doesn't seem to be any issue about that, but we do have to make some progress.
Absolutely. But I think then question one, obviously we can get with Phil when he arrives. Question one is, do we feel like we've captured all the data we require? And it sounds like there's a level of potential desire for more information.
Yeah, there is. Just this, I think we should eliminate any of the challenges. And the challenge is right now is how do you arrive at this number when in 2010, you arrived at, at a different number? And you have two well-known engineering firms that had this number and now through one core we're at this number? And if you take that cloud away and, 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 you know, the, I think if, if we all are convinced that this is the end of the road or not, then, then I, I think we'd feel comfortable with it.
So it sounds like the data discussion will be ongoing through Infrastructure Advisory Committee and Phil's collaboration.
I would say very shortly. I mean, this, this should be an end discussion pretty quick.
That's great. And then the optionality we have, right? The different pathways we can take and the pros and cons of that will be a part of that output for council.
Right. I think we're going to eventually get down to maybe two options, maybe three options.
Okay.
But again, people need to be thinking about, and I don't know how council will address this, but if we end up on a path of removing the bridge, do we want it in the same place or we want it through the park? Blah, blah, blah. And those are the things that are going to have to be addressed. But again, that's going to be predicated on the finality of, of the calculations.
I have a question there, and maybe it's a question for Phil, but is it, you mentioned the, the 10 to 15 or 30-year, would that, would that substantiate the load ratings at current or would that increase the load ratings?
No, I mean, on the, on the, like call it the rebuild?
No, 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 on, on a substr-, a superstructure under or above. As, I, I didn't, I didn't think that was a rebuild. I thought that was.
He's, he's referring to the three options, okay? The rehabilitation options, whether it's under arch support.
Right.
On top, arch support, where you were mentioning maybe a 35-year life expectancy out of that? That's what, that's what I believe.
Yeah, and I, I think with Phil here, he could resupport that, but I, I think it would reach legal load standards.
Yeah, Phil, maybe it's a good time to invite Phil up. Phil, do you want to just maybe come out of the podium or you can sit next to myself?
Why don't you go sit next to the mayor of Phil?
And then we're going to turn your mic on so everybody can hear you. Maybe you can just start with a proper introduction for the community that's here listening.
And I apologize, I left with what I thought was plenty of time.
We appreciate you for arriving and we've got a good discussion. Director Fonte took the reins.
I've been reading from your notes, so I, I haven't really.
I've been learning more from him every day, so.
There you go.
He does fantastic research for city finance guy. I've never met one like that, so.
Well said. And so introduce yourself and then we'll get started with the round question.
I'm Philip Razor. I'm the project manager for the bridge program inspection and evaluation of the structures here within the community, regional manager for Collins Engineers. Our folks will be out next week inspecting all of your bridges, couple underwater, and the rest will all be the routine above water. And this is our second year in our contract and we've been working with them on inspecting them, keeping you current with MDOT and then also looking at, you know, load rating the bridges as needed. Horse Island's won. In the past, we load rated the Young Drive, so just here with looking at different options for keeping the community safe and keeping the structures going.
So, I, we're going to go backwards, kind of quick here. We're on the Horse Island Bridge and I, I told them that we're still, me and you and, and, and a couple of the infrastructure guys are still challenging your calculations on the eight, twelve, and 16. But without, you know, with that being subjective and, and based on some of your knowledge of the patents and everything else, that's kind of where we're at right now. And I told the council that we want to wrap those arguments up within probably the next two or three weeks so that we can move forward one way or the other, okay?
Correct.
However, the, the, just, we need some more clarification on, on the MDOT portion of it. The bridge as it stands now, because it went through the federal grant, MDOT directing.
Local bridge funds, yes.
Yeah, the local bridge funds. That bridge, in its current state of the evaluation you put on it of eight, 12, and 16, cannot be rehabilitated unless the weights increase for the axle load. Is that correct?
That's correct. So when the application went in a couple administrations ago, they applied to replace the bridge. And that's how MDOT's local bridge agency review organizations looked at it. And I noted to MDOT that the council resolution was for rehabilitation, not for replacement. They still look at the application and it's compared against everybody. So, MDOT can, you know, MDOT is flexible at times. They want to work with the communities, so they've given an extension for when these funds have to start being used. But based on federal law, when it's this kind of money for this, they're going to want to see it being updated so that it carries full legal loads without a posting.
So, before we get into your, your design options real quick, we don't want to like linger on there. As the current postings are right now for, we'll take Horse Island Bridge first and then we'll go to Young Street Bridge because that's our present state of mind. What does that do for emergency vehicles and so on and so forth? What are we restricted to? The city, city, like I said, initially placed these restrictions on, but didn't upgrade their, their, their support equipment. So, heavy fire trucks and heavy garbage trucks were going across these bridges. So people thought they had the luxury of doing other things with it since municipal vehicles were going across. But in fact, the Young Street Bridge is what it is. You're going to upgrade that.
Mm-hmm.
But the Horse Island Bridge was a, we'll call it a, a false posting up until your recent calculations.
Correct. The, as you know, the history was that it was without the existing plans, it was difficult to get someone to come up with a load rating. The load rating was really initially put on there more as a restriction for vehicles that couldn't make a turnaround. The previous calculations were based on assumptions for what could be in, in the arch since nobody really knew. Then coming to light, you know, a lot of direction was that this could be a Luton patent, famous bridge designer originally from Grand Rapids. And so we've done a lot of research, we did some testing and coring. The concrete's in pretty good shape. It's just the amount of steel that we're working to verify because it's really hard to do, obviously, in that kind of structure. But we're working on that, but, you know, the first couple runs came out with, it's probably not, you know, it's probably pretty close to what it's posted for right now. So we're trying to verify that and go through some things. You know, Rich has brought up some good questions and so we're looking at it, but at the time, it looks like it's probably a lighter loaded structure so that, you know, a lot of the, even emergency squads are usually 20 tons, which puts it over the limit for that. So I know it's an inconvenience, but we want to make sure that we're safe and we don't have something, you know, and as you know, occasionally tractor-trailers slide through there anyway, so.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of that.
It's, it's safe since it's the only access on and off the island.
So, for the people of Young Street, are they able to get school buses across?
Yes.
Fire engines?
Smaller ones. I don't know what size you have. That's what I have to.
I can comment on that. So our engine, as it stands right now, fully loaded is 48,000.
3,000 pounds?
48,000 pounds.
How many axles?
One, one. And then I think our ladder as well, I think that's one axle and that's a 56.
Are you considering the steering axle and the?
The total axles on the vehicle is what I meant.
So total axles would be two on the engine.
So the, the, the non-ladder truck is just a front and rear axle?
Front and rear axle.
And 24 tons?
Correct.
So that's, how far apart are they? That's the other thing.
Yeah, I mean on that.
Well, it sounds like we need to take that as a follow-up though, just to distinguish the data here, so Director Public Safety can work with that.
That one should be pretty close.
Yeah. School buses?
School buses, yes.
Garbage trucks?
Kind of look and see which garbage truck is.
These are all fair, but these are the questions that the citizens in the community are faced with every day.
Absolutely.
And it, and it gets, the same question goes to the Horse Island Bridge, you know?
Right.
So, and I've suggested to council that, as you and I have talked, we're going to want you to put like a posting together so we could attach this to building department permits and that the girls could also have them in the office so they can speak to that and hand them out to people when, when needed. I think that would better educate and enforce things. And again, I made mention of, of the director sending an officer to a commercial truck school to get, to get certified so we could start enforcing these incursions. And so that, that's basically where we're at now. But Councilman Mulder asked a question about.
Options.
About options. Go ahead.
So from what I understood from your, your readout, is that one of the rehabilitation options may have been to put structure underneath or above?
Correct.
Would that one increase us to legal load without posting?
Yes. Is, is that acceptable by MDOT, that configuration? Yes. Okay.
Even with duration of expected life? That's the, I think that's the, that's concern is that MDOT's going to want the money spent wisely for a duration of.
It'll, those two will be 50, 50 years on. So, you know, we, the person I'm working with who did an exactly same one where they slid the six-inch-thick precast segments underneath an existing arch, very similar to this, it was 50 to 75 years for the life. And so it retains the existing structure sitting on top, but that new precast one that once you blend everything in, you won't know it's there. You know, precast members are good for 50 to 75 years.
That would be acceptable by MDOT?
That's good. Even without being two, two lanes wide?
We would, I talked to him about filing for an exemption for that because of the low volume of traffic on the bridge and that you've already been treating it as a one-way stop condition. You know, typically they want everything to current standards, but then there's exceptions and because of. And because of the low volume of traffic, they would be willing to work with that part. They won't, they're not willing to work on the load rating part, but they would be willing, again, because you already treat it as a stopped, one-lane bridge as it is.
Okay.
And it's just, for the low volume, it's only six inches under the minimum width for a two-lane bridge.
And, and that would be considered a rehabilitation, a replacement, or an MDOT size?
That would be, that would be a rehabilitation. Because it's not a reconstruction, you're not tearing out the old arch. But it's a, it's a rehabilitation, but that brings it up to full legal loads.
And I wonder if that's, I mean, it would, it would blend into its, its historical aesthetics.
Yes, and then the other one, which was the concrete saddle that goes over the arch. And, you know, we approximated, assuming a twelve-ounce saddle, it could be a little bit less. The only problem with that is they're building on top of the arch, so you're going to raise the profile a little bit, and we have to chase it. So the one underneath is a lot cleaner option, as far as not changing the roadway profile and messing with those kind of things.
So right now, Phil, we're looking at then four options, right?
But you have, you have four options you can choose. Only two are probably going to work with the MDOT grant.
Okay, so there's four options, but only two is going to work with the MDOT grant?
Correct.
What are those two?
The precast members underneath and the concrete saddle that's on top of the existing.
Okay, but the other two, though, aren't they reconstruction?
Those are.
New bridge?
Well, one's a repair, well, I'm sorry, yes. There, there's a third option is you tear the bridge, tear the bridge out and replace it with an arch bridge that looks similar to it. And it could look much more similar to it than the middle Gibraltar Road one looked.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that's a nice-looking bridge, but it's not what you have out there. So it's, it's possible to replace it and it look just the same. We just have to go through the SHPO requirements, that there's none other options. And then there's, you know, and that would be the only full replacement. It would still look like an arch bridge. It wouldn't be a straight-beam bridge, that type of thing.
But all, all those options, that.
Those, those three options would qualify for the MDOT money.
And all those, all those require the bridge to be shut down?
Yes, you'll, we'll have to do a temporary.
Okay.
Bridge right next to it.
The rehab versus the rebuild, from a life cycle perspective, perhaps in context of the options?
Obviously, the brand-new bridge, that's probably going to be seventy-five to a hundred years. The other two options are fifty to seventy-five years. If you do what we would normally think of as a rehab, where you go in, remove the wearing surface, go in, put new waterproofing on top of the buried arch, add some carbon fiber material that could help give some strength, it just doesn't give enough to get there. And that would give you probably another twenty years of life, but it would be at the reduced load.
Okay. So I think, just to kind of take a step back, because Treasure Fonti had covered a lot upfront, so, Phil, thanks for being here. So I think our administration's goal was to advance our data understanding of this bridge situation. So thank you for being a huge help in that. What I'm hearing from my council peers is there might be some, two to three weeks in front of us to make sure we feel confident we've gotten all the data we need.
Okay.
So I think there's infrastructure advisory committee discussions to make sure we've exhausted the data piece. Then to segue from that, and we're just focusing on Horse Island right now, the optionality you just described, right? Four options, some meet MDOT requirements for grants, some don't, with the differential life cycles of anywhere from twenty years to up to a hundred years of duration. Obviously, those options come with financial trade-offs, too, right? So.
Correct.
So, you know, if we think about the rehab pathways, could perhaps be a lot more cost-efficient. And I'd love to, maybe you can color on the cost element of this, how we consider that?
And we're kind of in reverse. The replacement of the structure is probably the least costly as far as the engineering, because you're, you're tearing it out, you're not having to work with unforeseen conditions. You may have a little bit more of the ecological, cultural resources, because it's a historic bridge. You'll have to document why you couldn't come up with another option that was feasible, that would give the life. But, yes, and then the other two, just because you're working with rehabbing an existing structure, there may be things that come up that we'll have to work on. So they're all, they're all kind of in there cost-wise, and so we did give kind of a preliminary budget. And unlike an MDOT job where if something changes, you just file for an amendment, get some more money, we were trying to get a massive, all-inclusive budget so that you knew, here's what the maximum is, and if we need less, we spend less. So, you know, that was a number we pulled together, and it's, you know, like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the engineering. It's probably about a hundred-and-fifty thousand for the environmental documentation. Investigate, geotechnical, those type of things are about fifty thousand. And then the other one, which I don't know the city's capability on construction engineering, that's probably another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, because you need to have someone out there supervising the construction, because at this time, you know, MDOT puts that on you rather than their resources doing that. And we did, we did make a discussion with MDOT about possibly taking over the design of the rehab or whatever. And they said they don't ever do that, even though someone had suggested they did. So, you know, we tried to see if we could save you some money on that type of thing, so.
Okay. So that's the Horse Island Bridge. I want to make sure we give a chance for any other council clarifications or comments.
I have your rebar.
All right, perhaps then we segue to the Young Bridge. My takeaways were, one, we could take the load posting up from eight, twelve, sixteen to sixteen, twenty-one, thirty-two. That's one element. And the other element was, we were talking about design observations, and perhaps the strand number being too low, or there's dead weight that isn't benefiting structure, but just providing dead weight. So Treasure Fonti, I don't know if you want to build on that, but that's what we're hoping to get any commentary you'd like to add to that takeaway.
Okay.
I, I read from your, your agenda.
Okay.
So.
So when we took a quick look, because it's load-rated, it was built in nineteen ninety, why was it load-rated? And what it comes out to is that the box beams that were put in there, I think that was probably about the time that MDOT started coming out, and they didn't want asphalt on top of these beams, because then you get those gaps in between the boxes, even though they're supposed to be pre-tensioned together to, as one unit. So then they started, you know, requiring, mandating a six-inch concrete top. Well, that has a lot of dead load that takes away from your ability to hold live load, and if you're going to put that on there, ideally, you bring stirrups up out of the box so it all works compositively. But also, looking at the design plans, which is all we have, they only put seven pre-stressing stands at the bottom of each box. And it really, in my checking with MDOT guys from back in that day about what was being done, and then checking other things that we do, it should have been ten to fourteen strands in each box. And because of the lower number of strands with that heavy monolithic thing, that takes a lot of the dead load, so it leaves less for your live load. That's why you're at basically two-thirds of the allowable live load. There's some other unique things about that bridge. I noticed, looking at some pictures not too long ago, does the abutment seem to end up with a gap behind it?
Yes.
The, it looks like in an attempt to keep the waterway as open as possible underneath there, that instead of battering the piles that support it from turning over forward, they battered two backwards, and then they put dead men in there that are all, you know, steel rods. Well, after, you know, thirty-some years, I'm guessing those steel rods tied to dead men no longer work, and so the force is pushing it, and that's causing that gap to open up behind it. It looks like you're filling in with material and asphalt. So they're rotating in, and now they're just jamming against each other. That's not ideal, but there's no way to really inspect those rods unless we dig down. And I'm surprised that that was done, because that's not a usual bridge design. So, yeah, that one, I'm not sure really how to strengthen the bridge, other than new boxes.
Got it.
Yeah, the, you know, the pile, some of the encasement around the piling is coming in, but that's just overall protection. The piles look very solid underneath, so the structural strength is there. It's just that plastic casing that was then filled with concrete is kind of eroded over time. But that's not a detriment to strength.
Could, could the boxes be, be modified in place with removable concrete? Could you add, add, add linears to that, and could you add stirrups?
I'll have to look, and I'm not sure, usually, because in general, the boxes are cheap, they just replace them. Now, that, that's easy to say when it's the DOT replacing them, so. We'll look and see if there's, if there is any option. I've just mostly seen them just be torn out and replaced, but.
If we, if, if, if they could, and you could add stirrups to them, then that, that future six-inch topping could be integral and could add to the live load?
Anymore, it is. I'm not sure, again, I wasn't, wasn't here when they were doing it in nineteen ninety. Usually, back then, they were still putting like three or four inches of waterproofing down, and three or four inches of asphalt. And then, because eventually those things worked loose, you were getting cracks, so MDOT came back and said that. But I assume they also said, and then redesign your boxes. So this could have been right in the transition time, and the boxes were designed, and then they just changed it. I mean, I don't know. It's one of those that we, we don't know. But I did go back and talk to MDOT folks from back in the day to see what was standard, and that was kind of the answer I got. Like I said, as well as our evaluation, which, you know, came up with the two-thirds of the load, so. That one, I don't know, was it posted at the same time as Horse Island?
No, Horse Island was posted.
Like eighty-three?
In eighty-three.
Yeah.
You know, that was just a subjective posting.
Well, yeah, it couldn't be, it wasn't built, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I might suggest we have, this is a public hearing, and the goal was to lay out information and then hear from our public. Maybe just if I can summarize and make sure I'm accurate in my summarization, and then obviously you can address the public in any comments or questions that come up, but.
Sure, Mayor.
I think at a high level, we have eight bridges in the community, and your firm and you are responsible for inspecting them and making sure we have an understanding and that they are safe for the residents that use them. With that being said, the focus of tonight is on those two bridges. Horse Island Bridge, Young Bridge. Horse Island Bridge, we have grant money allocated. We have advanced our data understanding. We have more data that might need to be looked at over the next couple of weeks with you and the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. That will come to a final proposal for council, and it looks like we have four, four options, ranging from rehab to full-on tear-down and replacement. So that's one topic. The second topic is Young Bridge, for which the headline takeaway is, community, based on the work from an engineering and infrastructure perspective, looks like we'll be able to take that load up from its existing load of eight, twelve, sixteen to sixteen, twenty-one, thirty-two, which would enable, obviously, the load to accommodate larger equipment crossing it. Is that a fair summary of where we're at?
That's correct, Mayor.
All right. Council, anything else you'd like to add before we turn over to our public? Treasure Fonti, anything you want to add?
I'm good.
Public, the floor is yours. We want to hear any comments, questions, or concerns that you'd like to share with us, because the next step is we're going to be taking this information and the advanced information, and council's going to be tasked with making some decisions on the future of these bridges, the posting consideration. So we want to hear from you, that's what this is all about. So if anybody's got anything they'd like to share, please, please come up, ladies first, to the podium. Make sure that light's green and that, state your name and address.
I'm Norbert House, three oh five six seven Young.
Thank you.
I live right over the bridge. By the way, I remember when I moved into this town, that was a one-lane bridge, and it was treated the same as Horse Island, as a stop on each side. I lived through the rebuild of that bridge. So I, I really liked the fact that it was a one-lane bridge. I wish it would have been kept as a one-lane bridge when we rebuilt it. It would have been, it was quaint to be the same, not, it's not historical as Horse Island, but it was, it was cool. So my question is, is if you're telling us that the structure of that bridge should have had ten to fourteen substrates, or whatever you said they are, and it only has seven, why are you suggesting that we up the weight that can go on that bridge? That concerns me. Number two, there was a prior garbage hauler that we had in town. I can't remember which the name was, but I remember that the, their bigger garbage trucks were not allowed to come on our island. But now, today, we have a different garbage collection, and their bigger trucks are allowed to come over. So it's confusing as a resident to say, okay, wait a minute, back here you said no, now it's okay? What's going on? And if our bridge is not built, the, the, the understructure of it, I am totally against you raising the limits on that bridge. And as to the fact that everybody says that we have a cul-de-sac that you can turn around in, please. I live on that island. When you go around that curve between Young and Triangle, there is, there's not, what I consider, there's a couple places in town, on a curve like that, there's no, no parking signs. So people can park on both sides, and for a truck or a trailer to get and make a turnaround there, no, sir. It's not going to happen. All this week, last week, I had semis backing up in front of my house. Yes, I understand there's a new build on my island. I'm not, you know, people, I agree with it. But he's not turning around in the cul-de-sac, he's backing up. And then, of course, you've got people parking on the side of the roads, too. So I disagree with that. On Horse Island, yes, you don't have a turnaround. You do not have that on Young and Triangle. So I disagree with that. I'm sorry, no, I'm not sorry. Those are my comments regarding doing that. And as far as a layperson to sit here and say, what, how big of a truck can come across? I've sat here and watched cement trucks stop at Worth and Young and will not come over that bridge. That's smart, but of course, right there, that can, that does create congestion right at Worth and Young, because it's right at a stop sign. So, you know, a cement truck offloading to somebody that can come over the bridge. Yeah, he's made quite a few trips over there when they were building that house, well, actually, two houses that were built over there. So some people, I agree with you, are abiding by the current limits, but there are people that I believe are not. And one other comment that was made tonight was that somebody called and asked for, what did you call it? An exception to the limit of the load? Is that, is, did I hear that, that on Friday, someone called?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so why would we give an exception to?
There, there was none given.
Okay.
No, they were asking for it, and that's what we were saying here, that you, you can't give an exemption for.
Yeah.
For a, a posted load.
Okay, then I misunderstood, but I was just like, oh, wait a minute, we can't do that.
No exception granted, and, and I, we're taking notes, because what I want to do is, across the public comment, including yours, thank you for kicking it off. I've heard, you know, you're expressed concerns around, you don't want the posting raised if you have concerns around the underlying structural components.
Correct.
So we'll make sure we'll have Phil speak to that this evening. I've heard your feedback on the garbage trucks.
Yeah.
Right, from our previous garbage truck provision and to our current.
Yes.
And that's something we talked about earlier today, we want to look at as well, because we want to make sure we have a good weight and axle understanding and distance, so we can follow up with the community on all trucks, right? Fire trucks and all that we've discussed this evening. And we've, we've heard your, your feedback. And so I'm going to take these notes down, and then, Phil, perhaps I might suggest, as we get all the public comments, we'll compile it together.
Okay.
And then you can address all of it at once. That way, we're not addressing each one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jim Gores, three one one four six, Bayview. About ten or twelve years ago, and this is regarding Horse Island Bridge. The Horse Island Bridge was inspected, and it was found of, suffered a lot of erosion to the underpinning, scouring, scouring problem, and the scouring problem was remedied with basically grout bags in, in underwater. Collins was our engineer at the time. And my recall, and you can correct me at any point in time if I'm wrong, but my recall was that it was going to basically be a stopgap, buy a little more time for the use of, of, of that bridge, Horse Island Bridge, with the weight limits that were in place, which are still the same weight limits as far as I can recall. And so that's kind of the groundwork I'm laying here for my question. My question is, is that scouring and temporary, I'm going to call it temporary, or fixed with the grout bags, been taken. or, or fix with the grout bags, been taken into consideration when you project thirty, what I heard to be thirty-five to fifty years for an underarch? So that, that's essentially my question.
Yeah.
Because if the underpinning don't last fifty years, that underarch doesn't matter.
I'm going to pull all the questions together because I think there's going to be some common themes here, so, so former Mayor Gores, we're going to pull that in, and we'll have that all addressed by one summation, uh, from Phil. So we'll, we'll be able to compare the grout versus the underlying layer that you discussed.
And I, I bring the question up just, just to make sure that that won't be overlooked. So, that, I got my answer.
We're inspecting that this, next week, we'll be inspecting that bridge underwater and looking at those bags and...
And it's, and I, my recall isn't that good, that's why I say it's been about ten to twelve years since we did that.
Phil, the, to answer Mr. Gores's question, though, on the under, underarch or the overarch, would, would any of that substructure be involved of improving it with that design?
We'll, what we'll do is we'll be taking corings to look at it. Generally, probably back then, it was timber pilings, but if timber pilings are...
They are timber piling.
Are kept wet the whole time, they don't lose their strength. I redid several bridges in downtown Dayton where we were same-era abutments, arches. We reused them for new structures because getting rid of them is, is more complicated than reusing them. But if they don't appear to be in good condition, one of the options is to do some drilled shafts and those type of things in the background to help support the abutment.
But, but, uh, to, to, to Mr. Gores's question, the, the grout bags that are supporting the scouring right now, would those be removed and then replaced with a, a solid foundation or...
Yes, yes, because we'd have to bump out a little bit for the new structure, so there'd be infill forming to make sure there, if we have to do anything. You know, obviously, we wouldn't be able to drive sheet piling because the bridge is still there, but there would be other options to ground that off and take care of it so that the scour action is not continuing to roll.
My recall is that they were timber.
Yeah.
Timber pilings in there, so...
I'd be very surprised if they weren't, yes.
Okay.
Appreciate the comment.
Very good, while they built a new house near that bridge and they put that one on timber piling, so it's still a practice.
Yep.
Thank you.
If they keep wet, they don't go bad.
No, they are, no, you're, uh, at the time of the grout bags, the diver, you, you've got photographs in the file of the timber piling.
I saw a video of him doing it, so...
Uh, please, but this is public's floor, so any other public comments for council or questions for council or the engineer that we have here this evening?
Good evening, Dennis Bosmer, two nine seven seven five, Point Drive. Um, if we reinforce the underside of the bridge, because I'm a toilet man, um, is it, how much does it decrease the access for boats coming underneath, like a pontoon, say?
Six, six to eight inches.
Okay.
I mean, it is going to reduce it a little bit, but it's not...
And because of the, um, gas lines and things that are underneath, you can't dredge to make it, it really wouldn't work, would it? It has to be from above. You can't get any more clearance when we, when we...
Underwater structures, either.
I mean, I don't know about the, the draft depth, but the, the other part is, we're going to lose like six to eight inches.
Okay.
And then it's just whatever the mean water level, surface elevation is there, um, which, again, those are, the other option raises the road more. You know, it just kind of depends.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, suggestions, concerns? All right, well, this, I think a great time for you to kind of, because I think a couple themes came out, maybe, and it was part of the council's questions, too. So one of the themes, maybe, let's start with that one. I think myself or others had raised earlier, and obviously a member of the public, uh, off the Young Bridge, has raised, how do we think about the recommendation to increase the load posting of Young Bridge relative to the structural observations and deficiencies that you've looked at?
Well, the deficiency that we ca, I mean, it needs lots of little tiny repairs. A chip here, there's that, that's patching, but that's more cosmetic. The, um, the structural question that you asked about, the seven strands does support those loadings. You know, we ran, um, the, um, bridge design program that does box beams, and that's where it came up with, because there's only seven strands with the loads that are applied, and those are easily calculated, the, the concrete and everything, that's how we came up with, uh, what is it, sixteen, twenty-one, and thirty-two?
Yeah.
So full load would be thirty-six tons. You know, just slightly off, so it would have been ten to fourteen strands. If they'd have put a few more in or not put the six-inch slab on there, it would have been okay.
Got it.
So comfortably posting it for seven tons and then making sure we understand, as you said, concrete trucks may not look bigger than others, but they're a lot heavier than a lot of the other trucks. So, you know, having a good handle of what the actual vehicles are, because there's thirty-five different fire trucks that go across, you know, when we, when we do our research, there's different, you know, school buses, you know, some that hold eighty-five, you know, people in them, others are down to forty-five. Knowing those would let us know what routinely could cross it for you.
That's great.
As far as the, um, what was your other question?
So her other was around the garbage truck and the observations there, previous company that was serving us versus current. I think what the action is, and it's kind of a theme we've captured, we can take inventory of the trucks we have, uh, the professional services that bring trucks in the community, and then we can obviously work with you to understand what fits our existing load capacity considerations and what doesn't.
You might, you might be even able to post that in a community bulletin so that people have know. But can I go back to, to the load posting? In, in my dive into the files, this, this load posting and the upgrade isn't new news. Your firm did a, a load capacity test, you were hired in two thousand and ten to do that, and I think you came up with the same conclusion, you just re-verified the numbers.
Yes.
So, uh, so the, you know, whether or not, uh, we don't have the answer on why it wasn't reposted, all you're doing is reconfirming what we've both found in two thousand and ten from the load capacity report. So you guys addressed it, Collins and engineers addressed that in two thousand and ten, suggested an upgrade, and it, it still remained up until this day, so...
Yeah, so I think, uh, that's great. So on the, on the first kind of theme there, the discrepancy between the increase in load capacity that's recommended, and then the structural observations, is the structural observations are keeping in mind to the recommendation of increased load capacity, and in some cases are cosmetic or not hindering us to take that load capacity up. So that was one kind of observation, I think, that we've covered.
Correct. And then the, the question about the permit to exceed loads is that for most commercial truckers, if they're going to take heavy loads on state bridges, they can apply for a permit, the load rating can be looked at, and if, you know, sometimes the bridges, if they shut it down so nobody else is on it, they'll give them a permit for an overload. That is not the kind of case for this structure because there's just not that extra capacity in it to do that. You're not taking five lanes of traffic off to let one super-heavy load go on. It's a two-lane bridge, but you wouldn't...
Agreed, and we have not been providing exceptions. Treasure Fontaine was just calling out that we get requests, perhaps, in the recent moment of that bridge.
With the raising of it, would, would that have permitted the request that was passed?
Uh, the comment from the public comment was, if, with, with this load recommendation increase, recommendation, is that going to help?
It depends on what...
Depends on the truck or the vehicle.
What the truck was.
Would it have helped whatever they wanted last week?
I didn't, we didn't know in particular. I think, I think, uh, I, I directed, uh, when I, when I got the call, I directed the ladies just to say, "No exceptions," and it's up, it's up to them to provide that information. We don't have to chase them around to find out what their, uh, truck weights are and their load capacity. Most, most transmix companies know that. They, you know, they have dispatchers, they have routing, they have owners that don't want to be fined, and they don't want to be responsible for collapsed bridges or, or detriments to, to bridges or roadway. So they're, they're pretty much, you're more, and, and most of your transmix companies are, are run by conglomerates now, uh, instead of just family. There's a few family, uh, businesses, but as, as the business has tricked you into where it is now corporately, they have dispatchers and everything else that want to do the right thing. However, like what I saw on Horse Island, uh, you know, a truckload comes from Florida with the Miami Hurricane logo on fifty-three-foot of trailer, drags across the Horse Island Bridge, I mean, center, you know, just load points it with his large, gets on the bridge and starts scratching his head on how he's going to get off. Now, with today's advanced GPSs and everything else, you would think that, that's a no-brainer. You would know that, you know, that, and, and then you've got two load posting signs approaching the bridge, so, uh, it happens. You know, the, the, the police officer can't be there when it, when it happens all the time. You have to, that's why a credentialed CDL driver, that's his responsibility and, and so on and so forth. But as, as the director gets people in, 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 in charge of that and certified, we'll be able to enforce that. But it's going to take the community to understand the trucks, and, you know, we do have eight bridges, and they're all unique, each one of them are unique in, in their capacities and everything else, and they all suffer from a lot of maintenance and history. So, you know, that, that window's going to always be changing, you know? As you inspect, you might have to downgrade a bridge. And, uh, so we're all going to have to be vigilant on what that is, what a garbage truck looks like, what a transmix truck, how much a, a yard of concrete weighs, and, and there are all engineering factors for that that are easily posted. So, um, I think, I think the, probably the better news is that the director's going to have people that are going to be able to enforce it. We're going to be more educated by this whole process, and we're going to be moving on.
Well said. Um, the second question I want you to address beyond what you've already addressed was, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Gores, uh, as well as Dennis had also commented on if you're going to do underlying work in regards to the rehab proposal. Obviously, Mr. Gores was commenting on the grout and what role that played, and I know you mentioned you'd have to...
So, yeah, the grout bags are a remediation effort, but because scour is continual and it's the Detroit River, so it's moving through there really quick, that's what the underwater inspections are for, to keep monitoring that. Because other than going in and driving sheet pile all the way around it, which you just can't because you've got the bridge in place, i- it's hard to, um, address that in a completely permanent sol- solution without, you know, a fair amount of investment. And so, um, that is also built into our thing is to look at that because, obviously, since we did the underwater inspection and did the grout rehabilitation plan and supervised that, we know that that's an issue there. Obviously, that needs to be cleaned up and fixed, but that's part of why it's on piling, that even though it's undermined, the piling goes down and is still holding it up, so it's not like a spread footing where then it would tilt in.
So the nice, because we'll have more data there and, and context of that question.
Well, next week, when they're inspecting it, there'll be underwater inspection, we'll get more data, see where it is.
That's fantastic. And then I know the last, uh, comment was, uh, from Dennis around, uh, what is the underlying rehab layer if that's pursued? How does that impact height above water for boats? And six, eight inches was your answer.
And, yes, and I can get a, some pictures of it, and I'll get it sent to council so you can see what, what it looked like. I'll see if I can get him to resend me the video. There was a video about how they did all the whole thing, and it was very slick, and it looks really good.
This has been awesome. Public, last call for any comments. I, uh, Phil, I know you've addressed all the comments and questions we've had thus far, um, but public, any other thing you'd like to add for Phil and/or your members of your administration here? Any closing comments from you that you want us to be aware of beyond, we're going to get more data, we're going to be given optionality for the Horse Island Bridge, and we're going to be looking at a recommendation for Young in regards to increasing the load posting. Anything else you'd like to share with us for closing?
We're excited to be giving you options that hopefully salvages the bridge and gets it up to the legal load so that you have another bridge that can last, you know, another fifty to seventy-five years. That's what we're looking forward to rather than, you know, a lot of people just want to come in and tear out and put a new bridge in. I think it's a really cool bridge. A hundred-year-old bridge, concrete bridges, there aren't many of them around. Part of it is, this one is actually, probably for so many years that you did not have an asphalt-wearing surface, that the drainage went right off of it and helped save it. So we'd like to see it as best we can to preserve it like it is.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Mayor, one, one more thing. Phil, uh, the call for applications for, if we wanted to put an application in for the Young Street Bridge, which is not...
They're due by, um, April, first week of April.
Is that something we can put on your agenda and, uh, to make note of that and then...
Sure.
Because that, that's, that's an application, so, uh, and, and we suffer, we got moved to the head of, of the line on the Horse Island Bridge because of the restrictions, and, uh, that would help that out. At least that would give us some sort of hope for the future.
Yep.
Great. Well, uh, it's been a very productive discussion. Public, thanks for being here and for sharing your questions and comments and concerns. Uh, with that, we will, uh, be closing our public hearing, and we will be back here in ten minutes for our council meeting. Thank you so much.
Yeah, seriously, thank you so much. I received license applications and my checks.
Oh, okay.
There's Diamond Yacht Sales and GBY. There was one that you sent to me or somehow got sent to me for GBY Marine Supply, and I just put it back in there and said, "It doesn't exist."
Okay.
On that question? I know, I know, I didn't, I'm, I'm cognizant that I'm on camera and I'm like... Oh, boy.